I'd vote for that. I don't know if she would.
She's out of options.
Like to welcome you to the May 20th West Des Moines City Council meeting. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please sign in. Three members present. All right, Ryan, any changes to the agenda? There are no changes, Your Honor. Think they're gonna get a motion?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
All right, please vote. Three yes. Okay, item two is citizens forum, which is the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on any item that's not part of public hearings, item six, or new business, item seven. All right. Item three, mayor, council manager, and other entity updates. Chief Lou, we'll start with you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we, tonight, we're going to hand out an award for a rare event.
For our own employee, Matt, you want to come up here real quick? Deputy Chief Matt Sonnenberg was recently designated as a chief fire officer through the CPSC, which is our accrediting agency, and they have a credentialing arm called the CPC. The designation program is a voluntary program designed to recognize individuals who demonstrate their excellence in seven measured components, including experience, education, professional development, professional contributions, association membership, community involvement, and technical competence. In addition, all applicants are required to identify a future professional development plan. The reason I say this is rare, there are a little over 1,300 worldwide fire officers that are designated as chief fire officer, and Matt is now one of 15 in the state of Iowa. So, it's quite an exclusive club. The professional designation is valid for three years, and maintaining the designation requires recipients to show a continued growth in areas of professional development, professional contributions, active association memberships, and community involvement. The CPC consists of individuals from academia, federal and local government, fire and emergency medical professionals, and it's quite a stringent criteria to get where he is. As you know, Matt was the interim. He can do the job of fire chief. He's a very good fire officer. One of the things that comes with being a good fire officer, you need the respect of your fellow firefighters, and Matt definitely has that on his side. To get where he is, Matt is not only a CFO, he is also an EFO through the National Fire Academy, and you need a good family for that, to help you along the way. And Diana, Cole, and Sailor are all here tonight, and for those of us that know the Sonnenbergs, they call it Team Sonnenberg, and they've helped him along the way to get here. I just want to make sure that we congratulate him properly and recognize not only the sacrifice, but the great achievement.
Thanks.
All right.
So, I'm gonna give you this nice flag, and I got it here without breaking it, because I might get that might not happen. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to hand that off to him.
Sure. The Commission on Professional Credentialing has confirmed Matt Sonnenberg designated February 5th, 2019, the designation of CFO, chief fire officer, for demonstrating a high level of competence as witnessed by your peers by documenting professional, educational, technical, and community service achievements, and fulfilling prescribed standards of performance, ethics, and conduct required of a CFO. Matt, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. No, it's all right. Thanks, Chief. All right, council reports. Jim?
That's done, Your Honor.
Kevin?
Nothing at this time.
Russ?
Just a couple things here. FNA met on May 10th. We discussed the Jarkor project at 1261 A Street. It's on the agenda for tonight. The project's gonna be a development of 9,800 square foot building with three tenants in it. One will be a farm-to-market specialty food market and restaurant. Another will be a restaurant that's gonna be relocating in the metro, a very successful restaurant. Excited to get that here. And a third tenant to be named later. The project qualifies for the property tax rebate program and will receive about $74,000 a year over the five-year for the rebate, and the value of the property will go from about $224,000 to $2.8 million after construction. So, it's gonna be a great, great thing for West Des Moines. We discussed expanding the Go West marketing campaign that we started during the Solheim Cup, and staff would like to contract with a third party to assist in the creation and execution of a digital marketing plan. They estimate spending about $15,000 a year for two years to go forward with this marketing plan, and they plan on bringing an RFP to the council in the near future, at least going out to RFP. As part of our affordable housing strategy, we set aside a little over $200,000 from our CDBG allocation for purchase and rehab of rental properties to be sold as affordable housing to low and moderate income individuals. Staff recently sent letters to a bunch of landlords across the city and identified two properties where landlords were willing to sell. One of the properties is in the 500 block of First Street, and the others in the 100 block of Eighth Street, and the properties' appraised values were $75,000 and $90,000 respectively. The plan will be to buy the properties at the appraised values, sell them for 25 cents on the dollar, and require the buyer to put in, to rehab the property with about $70,000 to $100,000 with the rehab, and then sell them for under $150,000, $150,000 or less, to low and moderate income families who qualify. It will be, you know, the first that we undertake this project, so there'll be some learning involved, but excited that this is going forward. We also reviewed, based on a constituent that had a concern with our policy on damaged mailboxes for when the snowplows hit them and damaged them. Our policy currently is that we try to, we report them right away, we try to fix those mailboxes, and it costs us around $100 to fix those. I think we fixed around 100-some-odd mailboxes. If the, and we fix them with very standard Rubbermaid mailboxes, or just your standard, you know, mailbox, and if the homeowner doesn't want that, then we reimburse them about $50. We looked at what other cities are doing, looked at what the actual cost is for us to repair those, and based on that, we decided to change our policy from $50 of reimbursement to the homeowner to about $100. It'll be more consistent with what other cities are doing in the metro. Finally, we reviewed Budget Amendment Four, which is on the agenda for tonight, and one of the biggest items of the amendment there is just simply the relocation of the Recplex project from the CIP budget, about $4.9 million will move to its own separate enterprise fund. We also have increased expense for replenishment of salt. We always do a very good job being very economic and environmental with the salt on the roads, and as a result, we had some salt left, and we sold some of our salt to the cities that didn't have any left, so they're gonna be reimbursing us for that. So, most of that in the budget amendment will be offset by getting payment from other municipalities. Real quick on DART, I'm the city's representative on DART. I'm really impressed with DART right now. We, in this last budget, we allocated $300,000 for what we're calling a transit optimization study. This is what we wanted DART to do as a city council. We want them to take a look at their business model and see if there's a more efficient, more effective business model, see if they could modernize their services and save taxpayers' money. So, we sent out an RFP, three firms responded to that RFP. I spent about half of a day interviewing these firms, and we're gonna be going forward with the recommendation for using one of the firms for this transit optimization study. What the study will do is essentially take a look at some of the other modes of transportation, what others are trying across the country. You know, we'll look at using things like Uber and Lyft in conjunction with the traditional DART service. If we do Uber and Lyft, it's probably gonna be a first mile, last mile type of deal. You can take the Uber from your house, do the bus stop, from the bus stop to your house, and we will look at subsidizing that ride. We think that we're gonna be able to save quite a bit of money on that. We'll also look at things like bikes, scooters, car shares, and all kinds of other modes of transportation. And we're actually looking as well at doing this pilot project using Uber and Lyft in Urbandale, in a very small area near Merle Hay Mall, to see how that goes, and, you know, really, our success is gonna be learning from that to see if we can implement that. The other thing that they're looking at doing, they've listened to what we've said, they're also looking at rightsizing some of the buses. If there are areas where we can use a smaller bus, we're looking at going to the smaller bus. It's not gonna save a whole lot of money, it will save a little bit in gas mileage, save a little bit on the bus price itself, but, you know, every little bit counts. So, that's it for me.
All right, John?
Yeah, one real quick thing. On the way over here from my office, stopped at the old bike road on 60th, because the Honor Flight motorcade was going by there, and kudos to Hy-Vee, obviously a West Des Moines corporate citizen. I think they're the lead underwriter for that program, and they're hosting an event there tonight. And then kudos for our PD, who I believe provided traffic support for the motorcade as they came through there. So, it's a cool program, and it was really neat to see all the lights flashing as they went by, so thank you for doing that.
All right, Renee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to share with you some of the kinds of things that I've been engaged in since our last meeting. Also, member Phil, Will and I both have needed to assist in the Year for West Des Moines every morning, and I don't take that lightly. I think to get that kind of title, you are representing the city and doing great things, so I was really happy to be there to support the individuals that are our citizens of the year. The, one went to Milton Coldeval and Mary Coldeval. As you know, they are with St. Timothy's Episcopal Church. Unfortunately, Milton was in the hospital with malaria. He had just gotten back from Africa on a humanitarian trip, and contracted malaria was in the hospital at that time. And then there was an emerging leader who is with Lutheran Church, Nick Brennan, Brandon, and Brennan, and he gave a phenomenal speech of acceptance and inspiration of hope to people and young people, and is doing great things. So, congratulations to those individuals that will be carrying the torch for a year, West Des Moines Citizen of the Year. I also am the representative to the West Des Moines Human Rights Commission and attended their last meeting, and they are really being very strategic this year. They are focusing in on things that they can do to have a greater impact on this city and to move the needle on this city being viewed as a city of inclusion, a city that is welcoming to all cultures, and ways in which we can demonstrate that and show that. So, really proud of the leadership that they are engaged on, in, and in that effort. And I just want to also say that Tom Hadden comes to our meetings very regularly, and so he is certainly showing the leadership from the city perspective that this is important and an important commission, and is offering his support in that effort, too. So, I thank you for that, Tom. Also, I also had the pleasure of attending the West Des Moines Police Community Celebration. Last week was National Police Week, an important week for our police officers. I'd like to commend Chief Scott for putting together and his team another wonderful celebration in the city. I think it was well-attended. It was probably the hottest day of the year thus far, but we made it through, and our fallen soldiers were, I mean, our fallen police officers were acknowledged properly, and I really want to thank the police for what they do, what they continue to do to help make this city safe for all of us, and the way in which they approach the work and really get to the things that matter in this city. So, Chief Scott, hats off to your team. I know you don't do it alone, but you all did a marvelous job. It was a wonderful family celebration. I also attended the Valley Junction Neighborhood Association meeting on Saturday. I think it's important and incumbent of us sitting in these seats to go out in the neighborhoods and talk to the association, so I really try to divide up my time amongst the Neighborhood Association meetings. And for this group, what's important to them, and we've heard it before, is alley curbs and trees, so it's no surprise that that is important to this group, and I applaud them for having their vision and what's important to them. And they did a lot of talking about pavements and paving some of the alleys, and I know that there are differences of opinion about where that stands, but their voice deserves to be heard, and they deserve to have it listened to. And so, I told them I'd get back with them and do more research on the issue of paving, and I have had that conversation with our city manager this morning, and we'll continue to have that kind of discussion to see what we can do about the paving of the alleys. So, what I don't know, I'll try to learn and dive into, and so I intend to do that. They also are very happy about the Taste of the Junction that's coming up. It is a celebration that they are responsible for and put together, and the Des Moines, the West Des Moines Human Rights Commission is going to also help rally around that festival and see whether we make it bigger and more impactful, and so there's going to be further discussions on how we can also put resources around the Taste of the Junction. I think that is as important as some of the other festivals that happen in Valley Junction. Cinco de Mayo is one that I support it, and I would like us to support the Taste of the Junction as well, because that is important for that area of town. So, those are the kinds of things that I have concerned myself with since the last time we've got together, and just having a ball representing the city of West Des Moines in some of these important issues.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Your report, Your Honor.
Okay, item four is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any councilmember wants to pull?
Can we go back a second? I forgot something, Steve. I just want to, you know, last, I think last council meeting, I'd learned that Bill Lilis had passed away, and Bill was a guy...
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Bill had a heart attack, and we were hoping he'd pull through, but...
Lost people four and a half weeks.
Yeah, but he passed away, I think, a couple weeks ago, and, you know, Bill was extremely professional. He was an incredible attorney, represented a number of clients, did a great job representing them before the city council here, worked with us on a number of issues, was very supportive of West Des Moines, and he will be missed very, very much. So, I guess I'd just like to take a moment of silence, if we can, for Bill Lilis to honor him.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Russ.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any councilmember want to pull any consent agenda item? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for all of them.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Yeah, we'll need to re-sign that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Give it a second.
Five yes.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, item five, old business, 5A, West Grand Business Park, Mid-American Energy Rexplex, southeast corner of South Jordan Creek Parkway and Grand Avenue. Amend the planned unit development to allow for development of an indoor and outdoor recreation facility, W. and G. McKinney Farms, LLC. Initiate ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I would just like to make a comment here. This is amazing to see this come to fruition, and, you know, I don't want to slight anybody because I know a number of people have worked very hard on this project, from Catherine Coonert to Jerry Nugent and a number of people, but I have to give a shout out to our own city manager, Tom Hadden, on this, who has been out raising money, working hard on this project. He has really helped to make this thing a success and come to fruition today, and without him, we would not be nearly where we are down the road on this project, so thank you, Tom.
I'd like to echo that as well, as I have talked to certain business leaders, when this particular initiative is brought up, to a person, they have brought up Tom Hadden's name, and have brought up the hard work that he's done, the legs that he's put behind it, the calls that he has made, and the partners that he's brought to the table. So, it takes a strong city manager to make this kind of game-changer event happen, and so I'd like to echo your comments, saying thank you as well.
Yeah, I think the original idea actually came from Greg Abel.
Yeah, and Greg Abel's another one that's really made this come to fruition, too.
We appreciate his interest in this.
Yeah, for sure.
This'll create a lot of vibrancy and a lot of youth, athletic opportunities, and for our region, so it's great. So, all right, please vote.
Five yes, North Men in the City Code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance numbers 1373, 1812, and 2299 pertaining to planned unit development, district regulations, and guidelines.
Move approval in the second reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
5B, Bridgewood PUD Northwest Corner of South Jordan Creek Parkway and Bridgewood Boulevard. Amend the planned unit development to modify wall sign regulations for parcel M, Bridgewood Commercial LLC. This is also an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, North Men in the City Code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval in the second reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, item six are public hearings. Items 6A, you're being asked to continue this to the June 17th city council meeting.
Move continuation.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Ashworth Road, west of I-80, generally located north and south of Ashworth Road, west of Interstate 80 to 98 Street. Amend the comprehensive planned land use map and amend zoning map to designate and zone property to high-density residential, medium-density residential, single-family residential, and business park, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 3rd, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the comp plan amendment and rezoning request.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6B. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a resolution and ordinance which we need to take separately. First is approval of the comp plan amendment, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval? Second.
Second.
Questions or comments on the comp plan amendment? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Second item is an ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration on the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments on the ordinance? Okay, please vote.
Five yes, North Men in the City Code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending Title IX zoning, Chapter IV zoning districts and map. Move approval in the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Ashworth Road, north, generally located along the north side of Ashworth Road between approximately 76th Street and 84th Street. Amend the comprehensive planned land use map and amend zoning map to designate and zone property to office, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 3rd, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the comp plan amendment and rezoning request.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6C. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have a resolution, ordinance which we need to take separately. The first is a resolution to approve the comprehensive plan amendment.
Move approval of the comp plan amendment?
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote. I will say that this has been worked on for a long time, it's come through the committee multiple times. Staff's been dealing with this, residents been dealing with this, so kudos to the process because...
Yes.
Normally, we would have a lot of people here with a lot of comments.
Five yes.
All right, second item is an ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration in the first reading.
Second.
All right. Please vote.
Five yes, North Men in the City Code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending Title IX zoning, Chapter IV zoning districts and map. Move approval in the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment to city code Title III Business and Licensing, Chapter II Beer and Liquor Control, and Title IX Zoning, Chapter II Zoning Rules and Definitions, Chapter VI Commercial Office and Industrial Zoning District, and Chapter X Performance Standards. Modify certain regulations pertaining to restaurants, bars, and outdoor service areas, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 3rd, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of five yes, with one abstaining and one absent, adopt a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance amendment.
Right now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6D.
I'd just like to make just a comment.
All right, why don't I get a motion?
Okay.
And a second first. This is an ordinance for the first reading.
Closing the public hearing first.
Oh, sorry. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. So, someone want to move it?
Okay, I'd move, or move consideration.
Second.
All right, Renee?
Yeah, I would like to just really thank Brad Bradley for the work that's been done on this. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of research, a lot of organizing this to put this together, so oftentimes, we sit here and we vote on things, and our staff really are doing all the behind-the-scenes work, you know, really making this happen, so I'd like to compliment Brad for the extraordinary work that he's really put into this.
And his predecessors, I know we've been working on this one for a long time, too, and again, I mean, I appreciate the industry outreach for our group to have reached out to these folks, and it says each person felt the changes proposed are fair and needed. I'm concerned that I'm trying to figure out how you guys convinced everybody to come to that conclusion, but again, this is a challenge, this has been a challenge for us because, you know, we've got, we want these establishments, we want them convenient, but we don't want them to disrupt people's personal lives, and I think this is a huge step to allow that to occur.
Yeah, I was really impressed, too, with the flow chart that they have. I don't know if that's something that we came up with, or if we took from somewhere else, or, but that's really impressive to be able to identify, whether it's a restaurant or bar, and not sit here and have to worry about, you know, how much sales they've had of beer and wine versus sale of food, and this just seems really fair, really clear and crisp to identify what they are, and again, I would say what Steve said as well, I really appreciate that outreach and dialogue that we've had with the people this was going to affect, and again, can't believe that we got this consensus.
The fact they're not here suggests that you guys figured it out.
Thanks for all the work.
All right, yeah, appreciate it. Please vote on 6D.
I know it, I know it, Cowboy Jacks.
Five yes, North Men in the City Code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending Title III Business and Licensing, and Title IX Zoning to modify certain regulations as they pertain to restaurants, bars, and outdoor service areas.
Move approval in the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment number five to West Town 5 Urban Renewal Area, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 10th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6E. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have a resolution and ordinance which we need to take separately, so the first one is a resolution to approve the urban renewal plan amendment, and there are no issues.
Move approval of the urban renewal plan amendment.
Second.
All right, questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Second item is an ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration in the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments on the ordinance? All right, please vote.
Five yes, North deleting property from the tax, zikram, and financing district for the West Town 5 Urban Renewal Area of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa. Pursuant to section 40319 of the Code of Iowa.
Move approval in the first reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Iowa Clinic Urban Renewal Area Urban Renewal initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 10, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6F. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have a resolution and ordinance which we need to take separately, so the first is a resolution to approve the urban renewal plan, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval of the urban renewal plan.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I guess the only comment I would say is that, you know, our property tax rebate program has really resulted in a lot of great economic development projects for the city over the last couple of years, and it's just great to see all these projects coming in, so.
Well, and I think if you look at the awards we've received recently, a lot of it has to do with the quality of medical services that we have in West Des Moines. I don't know if I can call them new hospitals, but the newest hospitals are here, and these significant expansions by these doctor organization is a huge benefit to our community.
It really is.
Okay, please vote.
Five yes.
Second item is an ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration in the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments on the ordinance? All right, please vote.
Five yes, in order to providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Iowa Clinic Urban Renewal Area pursuant to Section 40319 of the Code of Iowa.
Move approval in the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 6G, the council's being asked to continue the public hearing to the June 3 council meeting.
Move continuation.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider agreement for private development initiated by RBWDM Grand LLC and Mercy Clinics, Inc. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 10, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Right now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6H. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve the agreement, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments on the agreement? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, 6I, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2018-19 fiscal year operating on capital budget amendment number four initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 10, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6I. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a resolution to approve a budget amendment number four. Russ reported on that briefly in his comments, and this amendment came through the Finance and Administration City Council Subcommittee.
I would move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6J, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the Cedar Ridge Sewer Extension initiated by the city of West Des Moines. It's been continued from the May 6 agenda. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 10, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
And now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6J. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and motions we can take together.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and I see this came through the Public Services Council Subcommittee as well. Are there any questions or comments on 6J? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 7, new business, 7A, Continental Plaza Platte III, 1625 Jordan Creek Parkway, subdivide property into two commercial lots, BJB Management. It's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat, and there are no issues.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
7B, Millridge Town Homes Phase II and Millridge Platte IV, southwest corner of Stagecoach Drive and South 88th Street. Approval of a site plan and preliminary plat to allow construction of a 79-unit town home development. Hubble Realty Company, it's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat site plan, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
7C, Mid-American Energy Rexplex, 6,500 Grand Avenue. Approval of a preliminary plat to subdivide property into two lots for development, four outlots, and approval of a site plan for construction of an indoor/outdoor recreation facility. And the city of West Des Moines, it's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat and site plan, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
7D, Continental Plaza Coffee Shop, 7350 West Town Parkway. Approval of a site plan to construct 2,000-square-foot drive-through coffee shop with a 600-square-foot patio. Centa Partners, LLC. Resolution to approve the site plan, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote. Great to see this corner redeveloping.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Five yes.
7E, 4,800 Corporate Drive Platte Survey, 4,800 Corporate Drive Subdivide Property into two lots for transfer of ownership and one street lot. Heard Realty, LLC. It's a resolution to approve and release the platte survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second. Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
7F, Des Moines University Platte Survey, northwest corner of South Jordan Creek Parkway and Grand Avenue. Approval of platte survey for transfer of ownership. W and G McKinney Farms, LLC. It's a resolution approval and release of platte survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I would just say I'm so grateful, I know we all are, to have DMU coming out here and grateful that they were able to work a reasonable deal here with McKinney's to do that, you know, between them locating here and our Rexplex. This area is really, really starting to develop like crazy, and I think you're going to see a lot more development in this area as a result of these two developments, so.
Yeah, and I'm excited. I got an invitation from Dr. Franklin to come to their board meeting on Friday and to present the state-of-the-city address that we did at the April West Des Moines Chamber Lunch.
That's great.
All right, please vote.
Or yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
All right, 4G, amendment to city code Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter IX Traffic Schedule, Section III Special Stops Required, 56th Street and Corner Street. City initiated an ordinance for the first reading, and this came through Public Services Council Subcommittee.
Move consideration in the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments?
The only comment I would say is I'm just very grateful that staff, anytime a resident has an issue with something like this, they go check it out and do a thorough analysis and study and give us the recommendations and are responsive to the residents, so I'm sure there are going to be a lot of residents happy to see this.
All right, please vote.
Five yes, in order to amend the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.